You want to start over again?
Now, or?
I think we have that information just kind of say we did little call we have a form. I have given it. So we can get locked and start up and going.
Love that. All right. So yeah, I represent from locked in if you guys want to take the take the wheel, go for it.
I'm sure I'll introduce I just Janet, I just want to make sure that you knew I Lou had called like a second ago. I don't think he's on anymore from the Board of Ed.
Okay.
Um, you're welcome. I told them I'd send him the presentation after the call and that we were in the waiting room. So.
Email.
Say one more. He's on email. So he, oh, okay. So he already has it. Perfect. Thanks, Janet.
Presentation up on the screen.
Okay, perfect. So just real quick, and then I'm going to hand it over to Tori. So myself, Lisa Daly, I'm on the call, Dave McCluskey as well, and Tori, the financial consultant. Um, and so she's going to go over the presentation in front of you. Please stop us at any time with questions. Uh, I'll try to kind of keep the eyes on it while she's presenting it if I see any questions come up. Thanks. Go ahead, Tori.
Thank you, Lisa. Perfect. So as Lisa said, I'll be walking through this presentation today. My name is Tori Regini. I'm the financial consultant on your group. So I track your claims monthly, and that's what we will be reviewing today. So your claims in your policy year to date. And then we'll review where you ended your prior policy as well, um, just to get an idea of how that compares. So if you want to start on the next page. Perfect. So this page here is our policy period claim trends. We actually have a few policies that we're showing on this page. We'll start with that top half graph, the P E P M claims by policy or quarter. So P P M is per employee per month. We break it down to that metric to account for any fluctuations and headcount. That really makes sure that we can get as granular as possible and compare this data on the apples to apples basis. So as we can see here, um, we have data from January twenty two all the way through October twenty twenty four. Um, what we noticed is that twelve month average is starting to increase a little bit. Um, as we move through October twenty twenty four, though, that is relatively consistent with the prior two periods. Something that I also want to point out, and I I do highlight it in that blue box in the corner. But it is expected that that first quarter of the policy year is very favorable. That's due to seasonality that we call it in uh, the underwriting world. So as people move through their policy period and the plan, they hit their deductibles. The plan won't pick up as much as the cost, so that will start to accumulate more claims. So as you can see in that first quarter of our current policy, um, July twenty fourth through September, that's a highly favorable quarter. Um, as we move through October, that is starting to jump up a little bit. Um, I wouldn't say that's any concern as of right now, it is expected to see that first quarter being highly favorable. So if we move down a little bit lower onto this page, we get into a little bit more detailed look at the claims last month. So this is again breaking costs into that P E P M metric. Um, but here we're looking at that cost, which is the blue line compared to your accrual, which is your rates times enrollment. In this case, actually, it's the budget. We tracked the budget in this cost report. So as we can see here, um, I've highlighted our current policy in that blue box, just to kind of point out and highlight that is our current policy. Um, and then the twelve months prior would be your your prior policy complete. So as we can see in the prior policy, the first quarter started out highly favorable, the first month especially very favorable. As we work towards the end of the policy, claims were really above the accrual almost every month, starting January twenty twenty four. So we had a really high costing and second half of the plan year for the twenty three, twenty four policy period. Twenty twenty four policy period, though, these are looking very favorable. So we've increased that accrual. Um, pretty significantly about thirteen point nine percent across both the town and the Board of Education. That was clearly a great move. As you can see, our total costs are coming in below that accrual every month in our current policy. So we're going to see on the next few pages that our twenty twenty four policy period is highly favorable through October. Any questions I can answer?
I think you have to repeat.
Oh, can I ask you a question? What's the accrual number, the um? The green line?
The accrual number would be your budget off the top of my head. I don't have those numbers. I don't know if Dave has a printout in hand that he's going to pull up right now. Um. So Dave, I'm going to refer back to you with the printout in hand.
Sorry, I was also muted. The, let's see. The accrual is current year is for the whole plan is one million, two seventy three, two seventy eight per month. So a little under one point three million a month.
Yeah, I thought maybe you had that broken down in a in a per employee per month as well.
Yeah, two thousand.
Yeah, it's around twenty or around two thousand twenty eight dollars.
Oh, gotcha. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, it's in the report that we sent over.
Yeah, and actually I should have known. And on the next few pages, at the very end, we do have that detail. Um, so we can skip ahead if we want to page. Eight of the presentation.
You can put it up for me. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, on page eight of the presentation, you'll be able to see that metric in more detail. So we can refer there later in um.
There's another question too. You mentioned the seasonality. Do you ever adjust the plan for seasonality? I know I've asked Dave this before, and we've looked, I've looked at it before, and it didn't seem like it was that consistent. But now, given that it's a high deductible plan, it seems pretty consistent that the first. Three months or maybe twenty five percent lower than expected in the last three are always twenty five percent higher. So I I just, because we sort of get a false sense. Everything looks good, and then at the end of the year, everything looks bad. And I I think it almost makes sense to do that seasonality with the plan. So that way. We could draw some conclusions early in the period.
Yeah. So when we project um, for the future plan year, we look at twenty four months of data, so not just policy period data. And when we look at that twenty four months, we're capturing that seasonality well within those twenty four months. Even if we have a couple of really good months, you know, in our rolling twelve, we're still capturing. That tail end of our prior policy all, you know, in that rolling twelve period. So if we were to look at this graph on the screen right now, and if we were to project today, we'd be looking at claims from November twenty three through October twenty four. And just our current rolling twelve period. And then I would also look at the additional twelve months prior to that. So November twenty two through October twenty three. So we're really looking at a widespread, you know, twenty four months of data, which does capture that seasonality within the data set that we look at for projections. There is definitely additional uh, assumptions we can build into the projection to add conservatism to that. One of those that we, you know, look at each year is adding margin to the plan. Um, so generally for a group your size, we would look at margin anywhere between two and five percent. Um, I believe this year we did not include margin at all, which is a standard for your group. Um. I wouldn't say that's abnormal with my book of business. It really depends on the risk profile of, you know, each individual client that we're that we're projecting for. But it's definitely something we consider, we can, we can consider this year when looking at projections.
I guess the the bottom line is that in the first quarter, where we expect it to be really good. Uh, as far as knowing how much to adjust it. Um, it's difficult to tell. Um, because it could, it could be going up. Right now, we have a pretty high trend number um, in the market. So it does, that's why we're looking at a twelve month number. It's the it's the full year. We know that at the beginning of the year, it's going to look a little better than than it will towards the end unless, you know, the year runs better than expected. So it's more or less, there's no real, at least I don't know of a really solid way of of leveling that off. So you don't get a false sense of security. I think we have these meetings. So that we can say it's running well so far, but we still think it's 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 consistent with what we've seen in the past. And that's the whole point of the conversation.
Now, if I'm looking at from last year, it looks like it went to hell pretty quick last year. So. Doing better than that.
Yeah, it's it's tough to say exactly how how much it's going to be early in the year. I mean, for for the town, it's even harder. Um, because of a number of people.
Well, and if you have a big loss to it affects that, but I just. I don't know. I I sort of see when we get together after six months, it's kind of meaningless to me because we we say we're doing better. And it looks like about what we used to do in the past. So let's give me a good feel for the whole year.
Right now, it's a little early to tell.
Yeah, I definitely agree with Dave. I also do want to point out, I I probably should have pointed this out originally going through this graphic. Um, but these are all gross claims. This is gross data that we're looking at. So in addition to, you know, our total cost, we would then back out the stop loss data. Um, we unfortunately don't get that data on a month to month basis for me to build it into this type of graph. But just know that, you know, with the policy period, we're also looking at uh, netting out those stop loss reimbursements as well.
Or if you go to the next slide, it kind of points out where just where we are right now. I think the town, I mean, in my opinion, I know Tori's going to walk through it all, but the town's running a little hot. Uh, and the board's running about where we would expect year to date. If we look at the loss ratios. So the net loss ratio for the town's at ninety eight point two. Um, that's pretty much where we want it to be. So if it's a with seasonality, that's a little bit higher than we would like. The board's running eighty five. That's about what we would expect.
Do you know what's driving it so quickly in the town right now? It would no large claim that it is it just utilization?
Um, the large claiming is it's still a little early for that. Um, you, the town has three people that are on the large claim report. They haven't, they haven't hit the stop loss number yet, but we have a hundred thousand dollar claimant. Uh, and a seventy two thousand dollar claimant and a fifty seven thousand dollar claimant.
Yeah, I would say those claims under the stop loss level are definitely driving the town's claims today. Um, and that's was right, you know, in three months, we've already had. The three and I'm not three months, the couple of months we've had, we've already have three employees in the town that have popped up in that large claimant profile. That's faster than they did last year. So that's definitely driving the town's costs in our current policy. The Board of Education also is seeing some large claimants. As we see here, there's one high claimant that has already hit that one seventy five. However, I would say the difference between those, the town being driven by high claimants this year is. Last year, the Board of Education also had a a pretty tough high claim year. So we kind of expected that to continue. Um, so with that being, you know, in our in our minds and, you know, for projecting purposes. I think this is playing out well in our current policy, but last year, the Board of Education was hit heavily by the large claims. So we tried to account for that. Um. In the projections for twenty four, twenty five plan year. Overall, though, all three groups are running at a surplus through October. Um, as Dave mentioned, the town is running a little bit hotter at that ninety eight point two, our target being a hundred percent, so still below the target. Um, but a little bit closer to that than I would want to be um, only through October of the current policy year. The town has no high claimants that have hit that pooling level yet, so there's no reimbursements. And this group only holds twenty seven point four percent of the population. So with the smaller population, um, the claims become more volatile. If we have, you know, more high claimants than we expect, that can really blow up our projection. Um, so we just need to keep a close eye on the high claimants to come through the for the town population. The Board of Education, on the other hand, is running, I would say, very favorably. This is exactly where I want them to be through October. So on a net basis, they're running at eighty five um, point one percent with only one claimant at that stop loss level right now. There are a few under the pulling point that we need to keep an eye on as well. Um, but through October, we've received forty one thousand in stop loss reimbursements, and this does account for a much larger population of the total group. So any uh, large losses that we see that are hitting this plan will definitely not be as impactful as the town. When we look at the total group, though, the net loss ratio being eighty eight point one percent is is highly favorable. Like I said, um, since the Board of Education drives most of the cost, um, the loss ratio for the total group more closely aligns to that Board of Education group. Okay, moving on to the last piece of this uh, year to date data is we're looking at the high cost claimant. So as I mentioned, you know, we always want to keep a close eye on the high claimants. These are really generally big drivers of medical plan costs. They're really volatile and unpredictable. So it's it's hard to make sure, you know, we're taking into this count into projections. We want to make sure we're monitoring this closely every single month. Um, through October, we have eight claimants that we're tracking above fifty K. I have the town and Board of Education codes listed there for each of them. Um, the one claimant that has hit that uh, stop loss of the one seventy five is coded to the Board of Education group, and that is an ongoing disease. Um, so we've hit the I S L. We will not continue to accrue claims for that claimant. Um, but that will continue to track towards your stop loss, and that will impact your stop loss renewal um, when that becomes time. Okay, and then here we're going to look at our prior policy period that just finished in June of twenty twenty four. So this is a complete twelve month period. Um, and this is what, you know, caused us to increase our budget, you know, pretty drastically at that thirteen point nine percent overall. So both the town and Board of Education ended at a deficit last year. Um, the town ended at a deficit at about three hundred thirty eight thousand dollars, that net loss ratio being about one hundred ten percent. In that prior policy, there were four high claimants um, that were quoted to the town that hit that one seventy five I S L level. With those four high claimants, they received about two hundred and two uh, two hundred and two thousand dollars in stop loss reimbursements. So as you can see, that really heavily impacted on the the loss ratios on a gross basis, the one sixteen, netting those out, we're at a one ten. Again, this is a much smaller portion of the population at twenty six point four. So it's starting to creep up a little bit in our current policy, but still about twenty six percent um, in the prior policy period. Moving on to the Board of Education, this group ended in deficit at about nine hundred thirty thousand dollars. Um, that net loss ratio, very similar to town at one oh nine point one percent. Uh, the Board of Education had three high claimants at the one seventy five and received about six hundred and forty six thousand dollars in reimbursements. So again, a lot of reimbursements coming through for the Board of Education. Um, as I said before, this holds about seventy three point six percent of the total population. And then for the Board of Education, total costs ran higher than accrual every single month, except for that first month of the policy period. Where we expect costs to be highly favorable due to seasonality. So the Board of Education um, had a rough year in twenty three, twenty four. Looking at the total group, I'll just add one piece here. Um, is the high claimant. So there were seven high claimants in that policy period above one seventy five. Benchmark for a frequency level, when we pull the benchmarks um, across locked in good business. For a group of your similar size would have about six point three hits at one seventy five. Now we know there's no um, you know, half hits in an I S L level, so we can run that down to about six. We would expect six hits at one seventy five for a group your size in your demographics. So we're a little bit above that frequency. Um, and we're also above in severity. So when I look at the average claim, your average claim is higher than our benchmarks. Overall, the reimbursements you receive for that policy were about eight hundred and forty seven thousand. And here we have the look into the detail for the high claimants. I did trim this down. Um, when we do send the cost per monthly, we look at this above fifty uh, fifty thousand dollars, but I've trimmed this to one hundred K just because the text got very, very small. Um, so as we can see here, I have the um, the identifiers for town versus Board of Education for the claimants that hit the I S L. Um, so we can see how that splits between the town and the Board of Education. The highest costing claimants are according to the the Board of Education. So even though the frequency is less, the severity of those claimants is is higher for the Board of Ed than the town.
Sorry.
Okay, and then we want to go through this in detail. This will kind of conclude my presentation today. But here is that detailed look at the monthly claims. We can have our current policy up top and that prior policy twelve months below. This is looking at the total group on the prior, on the next following pages, we have the breakout of the town and the Board of Education separately. Um, but I really want to focus on the twenty twenty three, twenty four policy period. If you look at those loss ratios on the very far right hand side, we can see um, hundred percent would be our target. And we can see that, you know, aside from July and aside from December twenty three, um, cost, claim costs were well above accrual. And the twenty three, twenty four policy year. So that's really why we had to increase the budget so drastically for twenty four, twenty five. Um, policy period at that thirteen point nine percent, and we're hoping um, that that will give us a favorable outcome at the end of this year. Any questions that I can answer for you guys um, as you look through this detail?
I think I've asked this before and probably been answered too, but my memory sucks. Um, is one seventy five a pretty standard threshold for a group this size?
It is. And each year, when we have our stop loss team look at marketing the stop loss, they they will provide a break even analysis for us. Um, so we can, we, you know, annually review that stop loss level to make sure it makes the most sense pricing wise and risk profile wise. Um, so once we do that marketing this year, we'll we'll provide that info to to double check that that is the right level. But it is appropriate at for at this time right now, pricing and uh, risk wise for your experience.
Thanks. We're getting, we're over a million bucks in premium for that now. So I was just uh, curious.
Yeah, so if we look to increase that stop loss level, that will help decrease the cost. It, you know, with high claims being, as I said before, volatile and unpredictable. It's definitely a risk that we have to, you know, pro price that out for you guys to make sure you feel comfortable. But that is definitely a lever we can pull one day if we need to save on those fixed costs. It is really hard to backtrack on the stop loss, though, um, to go back down in a level. So when we do make that change to increase stop loss and possibly save in fixed cost premiums, we just want to be really mindful that it's the right decision at the right time. Because again, it's it's very hard to go backwards on that um, stop loss level.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Perfect. I really appreciate your ice's time and attention today. Um, if you have any questions while you review this, please feel free to reach out. More than happy to answer any questions as you, you know, dig into the detail.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good night, everyone.
You too.
And happy thing, and happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, you too.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You guys' presentation on my computer that I think is handed to everybody.
You want to, Fred?
Perfect.
Okay, Mark, hear us. Are you correct?
No, Carrie, fine. Yes. Can you hear us? Okay?
Yeah, there's um, uh, we have hard copies here, but there won't be one up on the screen, so. On your presentation.
We have them. We have them, right? Okay. So David, why don't we introduce Craig? Because nobody's met him before, so. So to the people on the board and the committee, rather, um, Craig has been a partner with us for thirty years. Craig sits on the fixed income desk. We're interest rates and bonds trade. And we thought it'd be a good idea to have him on to talk about interest rates when we get to that portion, because things have changed so dramatically. Um, so that that's why Craig is on right now. Okay?
Thank, thank you, Mark, for the introduction. Very nice to meet all you over Zoom.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Craig. All right, so we'll we'll uh, we'll get started. Generally, we start with um, the overview of the markets. And then we get into the the three different, four different portfolios. Uh, beginning on page four. Of the book. So what we're talking about here is is um. Usually, in a, if we look back in in kind of history at the different types of environments that that markets go through. Um, when you have interest rates declining but doing so gradually, that's usually a pretty good setup for um, most investments, but mainly stocks going forward. The key word is gradual. Um, if you if you have a dramatic drop in 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 interest rates, that's usually a response to something bad. Whether it be a pandemic or just a run of the mill recession. Um, but if the Fed is is proactively uh, lowering rates. Without there being an immediate recession coming, that's generally a good, good environment for to support, you know, investments or risk assets at the time. So it seems like that's the environment we're we're going into.
Yeah, what what's happened is the the Fed has been targeting a certain level of inflation where they feel comfortable that they could start doing what's called easing, which is lowering interest rates periodically. And we've gotten pretty close to that, you know, two, three percent inflation rate. And, you know, anybody who's gone shopping or had to buy any big ticket item knows that for a while, we were running very hot on inflation. Uh, and in some cases, we still have above average inflation if we look at things like homeowners insurance or car insurance. But broadly speaking, um, you know, if we look at a basket of goods, inflation's come down to a level where the Fed feels comfortable where they could start lowering rates. And that's generally a positive. They do it slowly for risk assets, and that that's really what we've seen over the last year or so.
Now, the variable with interest rates, and I think I'll turn it to Mark and Craig, um, is that the Fed has cut rates three times. But, I mean, if if you look back, the predicting markets for interest rates, including what's going to happen going forward, keeps changing. Right? And so that's the thing, part of, you know, our view is that, yes, rates will likely come down, but to what extent? You know, um, that's the movement target. Craig, you want to add anything on on rates?
Absolutely. And and you guys are spot on in terms of, you know, what's transpired with with inflation. I mean, think about it. Core prices averaged almost eight percent in two thousand and twenty two, and here we are almost down to the Fed's two point zero percent target. And um, uh, the the improvement in in the inflation picture is actually remarkable. Of course, everybody hated to see higher prices, but the way inflation has come down is is a big accomplishment. Um, that being said, you know, the the market, David, as you just said, has really gyrated and and volatility has been high recently. So um, before the election, you had a bond market that was pricing in close to three percent of total Fed fund cuts. And as David just said, the Fed's cut seventy five basis points so far, or zero point seven five percent. Before the election, they were supposed to cut another two hundred and twenty five basis points next year. Um, but since the election, the market has sort of flip flopped, and now the market's only pricing in about seventy two basis points. So about three more interest rate cuts for all of next year. Um, you know, so we also see interest rates gradually going down in terms of longer term rates. The longer term rates will impact things like mortgages, which of course impacts the economy. But short term rates impact things, um, you know, like credit card debt and small business loans. So short term rates are really important, and they would ultimately stimulate the the economy even more if Fed was able to be more aggressive. Um, but it's really a tug of war. You know, the 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 bond market rallied significantly today with the nomination of Besant as Treasury Secretary. And he was supposed to be um, not necessarily opposed to strong tariffs and severe tariffs. But would would be someone who is more in the camp of it should be gradual, not at all. The bond market and the stock market had a big day today during the appointment. As this call has been going on, uh, President-elect Trump actually just announced about twenty minutes ago that he'll be putting a ten percent additional tariff on all goods coming from China, all goods. Um, not too unexpected. However, it was very unexpected what he just announced. Is that President-elect Trump will be putting a twenty five percent tariff on all goods coming into the country from both Mexico and from Canada. Uh, the market was not expecting that, so wouldn't be surprised to see the equity market have a pretty negative day tomorrow and for interest rates go higher. It's ultimately a a trade war in terms of tariffs is inflationary. Um, and and of course, inflation has been trending in the right direction. But, you know, we'll see what happens. The market can continue to be volatile. Um, U B S economists and strategists seem to think that a lot of this is just posturing. And again, more uh, more bark than bite. And they also note that in order to enact these tariffs, it actually takes years. You don't enact them on day one. Um, it's a four phase approach that actually will take over two years to to come to fruition. So um, you know, the bottom line is, we have seen a remarkable improvement in the inflation picture that is absolutely supportive of stocks. that is absolutely supportive of stocks and supportive of economic growth. The, as was just said, the Fed certainly has latitude to cut rates, because, you know, the Fed has a dual mandate to, of course, combat inflation, but they want maximum employment. So the reason why the Fed will likely continue to lower rates despite inflation maybe not going down to the 2.0% target is really because the unemployment rate has been gradually ticking up. The Fed doesn't want to see the unemployment rate tick up anymore. I know it's low historically, but, you know, we're approaching like the 4.2% level. It's a 4%, almost 4.2%, which is what the Fed doesn't want to see it go above. So for that reason, they do want to continue to cut to stimulate growth. But why don't I pause there, David, see if there's any questions?
I do have one question, and this is just because it's been a long time since I've been in school. You mentioned two years to enact tariffs. Is there a reason it takes that much time?
So they need, so each, from what I understand, that's a great question. Each tariff that's enacted, and again, you know, in, in Trump 1.0, back in 2017, when he enacted tariffs, there was a four-phase approach. And they actually need to go to committee and then get approved. And it takes many months for that to happen. So if you go, if you start out with less severe and you gradually ramp it up over the four-phase approach that he had the last time, it needs to go to committee each time, and it needs to go to budget and pass congressional approval. So it just, it takes an awful long time. We don't think, even if Trump wanted to move at, you know, lightning speed on the tariffs, we still don't think the bulk of them, where the most severe tariffs would be enacted until middle of 2026.
Thanks.
Imagine there might be some free trade agreements in there that would be disputed.
So. I think there's going to be a lot of wrangling over the policies, for sure. But, you know, I think at the end of the day, the bottom line is, and what's most important for you guys in the portfolio, is you still have, you know, inflation has come way down. You have growth that's been above trend and is likely to be, you know, continue above trend. You're very likely to have the 2017 tax cuts made permanent, which of course is stimulated for growth. You're likely to have less regulation. So really, the only thing that could derail what looks to be a very strong economic picture right now would be a true trade war with, as we're seeing here, Mexico, Canada, and China, and maybe others. The time will tell.
Thanks, Craig. And so I think we talked about interest rates and the overall economy. You know, just checking in on the consumer is sort of the other, other part that we want to focus on, on page six and seven. And so, you know, we've been talking a while about the excess cash in the system that supported most individual consumers to get through a multi-year period of higher costs of living. And so the chart on page six illustrates really why we haven't gone into recession throughout the higher costs and the inflation that we've had. You have this excess of savings started during the pandemic. That's the gray line. That's accumulative savings. And it's been coming down, but there's still, there's still a cushion. Additionally, on the right-hand side, it illustrates income is also rising, helping keeping pace with, with those higher costs. And then kind of the final look at this is on page seven. So this chart's super interesting. On the left-hand side, you have personal spending pre-pandemic, and you had the big drop-off, and it's now trending above where it was pre-pandemic. Most of that is going towards services rather than goods. But, you know, the consumer represents a pretty, a large part of the economy. And while there's pockets, you know, not all, not all consumers are equal. In fact, there's many that are struggling with higher costs. But as a whole, the spending that's driving profitability of companies is still there. And we still, still haven't seen it a great.
So to put what David said into a different perspective about why we didn't have the recession because of the money supply, a different view came when we sat with our former chief investment officer a few weeks ago, and we were talking about the fact that this was the most widely broadcast recession starting in 2022. Every quarter, the next quarter was going to be the recession. And it took until a couple of weeks ago for everybody to sit around and think about what, why the Fed would raise rates from 0 to 5%, and we didn't have a slowdown or recession. And it became very clear for the first time in history, in our history, the recession didn't happen, because if you think about COVID period and pre-COVID, interest rates were near zero for a relatively long period of time, from 20 to almost 2022. During that time, everybody in this call and in the room were able to refinance car debt, house debt. You may have taken your mortgage from 7% down to 2.5% to 3.5%, somewhere in that range. If you're leasing a car, the number-one car that's leased is a Ford Explorer, was $350 during COVID. Now you go get the same car at $750. Town in Newington, if it put a bond issue out, was doing it maybe half the price or half the interest rate you have now. So the concept was, we didn't have the recession, because everybody, every business, was able, and every governmental entity was able to go out and refinance debt, and really didn't have to spend money for new stuff for two or three years. Now we're hitting that wall, where, as I said, the Ford Explorer lease goes from 350 to 725, actually. And people are starting to have to raise money. So there's plenty of time to adjust, and we're not, it doesn't look like we're going to have a recession at all. So that makes, it's a different way to look at it. Any questions on that?
Maybe to wrap up where we think, you know, the actual markets are going into next year. Page 10 shows a bunch of illustrations, you know, focusing on, we'll just say the stocks and the bond. The S&amp;P at the top left. This is, this is UBS's base case, so it's called a 60% probability of that dotted line. So it was 6,200 to the middle, middle of next year is modestly higher to where it is today. End of next year, about maybe 10% higher from where it is today. And then the bottom left and bottom middle are the two sets of interest rates we talked about. You know, shorter-term being Fed funds and longer-term represented by the 10-year Treasury. And in both scenarios, we're seeing downward movement. It's just a question of, you know, to what extent, right? And the, and the Fed, you know, is going to be what they call data-dependent, right there. There's predictions, but that's going to change. It's changed dramatically in the past two months. But in general, we do think it's a downward-moving trajectory. And so you take those two things, our view into next year. First quarter of your fiscal year was a good one. And so we view it as set up as, you know, modestly higher overall portfolios going into the end of your fiscal year, not without risk and volatility, right? There's also a lot of geopolitical risk that still is out there that could be a wild card. But right now, we view everything as positively.
David, this is as of June. Now, is, I would assume UBS is going to change this.
They have, yeah.
They already have, okay.
So, so yeah, so obviously, this took place before the election.
Yeah, right.
And with a red sweep. Their views have changed slightly. They still believe the economy is going to grow. But they've talked about areas that could benefit from a Trump and red-sweep presidency. And, you know, if we look really what's happened since November, the areas of the market that have been very, very strong have been those that are positively impacted by less regulation. So think about financials, I would say, energy to an extent. I think about smaller US companies, this whole idea of onshoring. All of these tariffs and everything are meant to benefit our domestic manufacturers. So smaller companies have done relatively well. Because the dollar has strengthened, areas like precious metals, things like gold and silver have struggled. Interest rates have risen from where they were prior to the election. And international stocks relative to US stocks have lagged a bit because of the strong dollar. So a lot has changed in terms of the types of areas of the market that have been strong versus weak. A lot of alternative energy stocks, not named Tesla, have been weak in here. So the expectation is that there's going to be a little bit less of support for, you know, some of these wind and solar companies. So yeah, so there definitely has been a Trump trade. Whether that continues, it remains to be seen. But right now, UBS actually raised their targets, because they felt that the combination of the lower regulation, lower taxes, there's almost zero likelihood of corporate taxes going up, was more positive than the potential negatives associated with tariffs. So their actual June 2025 target from the, when this report was included, actually has gone up a little bit.
Yeah, I, I think I've seen the bond yield curve like flatten a bit over the last few weeks. And is that because the interest rates are going to continue, the longer-term or midterm interest rates are going to continue to be high and not come down as much because of Trump and the debt, additional debt, and economy growing?
Yeah, it's a little, Craig, I don't know if you want to address that. Obviously, a lot's changed just since early November.
That's why we have Craig. We thought these questions must come out themselves.
Sure, sure. Now, that, so you said that the yield curve flattened. You're exactly right. Matter of fact, you know, you guys were talking about economic health. One of the biggest indicators for a potential recession was the yield curve being so inverted. That meant that the yield on longer bonds is actually lower than the yield on shorter-term bonds. The, the yield curve inverted again this morning. It's the first time in many months that it inverted. And it, and it's very flat. What I mean by very flat is the two-year and the 10-year Treasury are essentially the same exact yield right now. But, you know, to David and Ashley's point, three trading days ago, the 10-year Treasury was over 4.5%. Now it's right around 4.25%. So the market continues to reprice what this Trump trade might look like. But certainly, the, the market is struggling. What I mean by that is, it is having volatility that we've only seen three times in the last 15-plus years, right? You start during the global financial credit crisis, 2008, that, you know, the Great Recession. And you certainly saw precipitous drop in rates during COVID. So we haven't had this type of volatility in the bond market outside of COVID and the financial crisis. But you're, but you're dead right. As of right now, the yield curve is extremely flat once again.
We'll have a different answer if you ask us two days from now.
I think you might have a different answer. You, you might have a different answer tomorrow, just because of the, you know, the potential tariffs on Mexico and Canada, which were a little unexpected. But I mean, I think the market, by and large, is very encouraged by the, by Besant being the Treasury Secretary nominee. You had the biggest one-day move in rates in a very long time today with that rates plummeting on that news.
Any questions before we move into the portfolio read? All right, so we, we'll start with page 14, police. And we have a November 20th market value of 72.5 million. 63% is in equities, 34% in fixed income, 2% in cash. And then just to show some of the more recent performance, page 15, the total portfolio for the, your fiscal year to, I'm sorry, for year-to-date. Calendar year-to-date is 12.79%. So fiscal year-to-date. If you move to page 18. Now, this is the performance as of September 30th, which has not changed much. So all the talk of volatility with the bond market, and then the stocks have been, you know, strong lately, the overall portfolio at the end of September was 12, up 12.8%. So it's kind of been flat since, since the quarter end. So your fiscal year start was up 5.74% for the, for the last quarter. And if we take a look at the different components, we have a MFS value manager of 14 or 16. Of course, the Vanguard 500 index, and then you're also indexing the growth part of the market, which has continued to be a good place to use low-cost indexing. And, and so that's up 23%, almost 24% for the year. Ken Anderson is an active small-cap manager who has added value. This year, they continue to do so, and in the quarter, are performing by about 3% for the year. Your international components, which do represent a smaller portion, but they are 15% and 13% respectively for the calendar year. And then your three-bond components, so D-SAM 4+ is the longest. So we just got, going to talk about interest rates, they have the longest posturing of the three bond managers, being a four-manager. And then your BlackRock and JP Morgan are a little bit more flexible and historically have been shorter-term. And you can see that reflected in their performance this year. Shorter-term fixed income has, has outperformed longer-term fixed income so far.
That's because the interest rates have come down more on shorter-term, bringing the value of the bonds up.
Correct. You've had, you've had, the yield curve has shifted.
Right.
But the, the longer-term, what would drive the performance of D-SAM more is longer-term rates coming down more. And they really have it this year.
Right, right. Or the shorter-term ones, we've gone from an inverted yield curve to pretty much flat.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, so you're aware, when we look at the, the mix of these managers and what the average maturity or what's called duration is of the portfolio, it's about 4.2, 4.3 years. So you're still a little bit under duration relative to the broader US taxable bond market. And that's by design. But BlackRock has come up in terms of the average duration to try to lock in some of the higher rates. JP Morgan is still relatively short-term, and the D-SAM portfolio is going to look much more like a traditional bond portfolio with an average duration of six years. But overall, between the three are about 4.2, 4.3 years.
We don't have any, any manager or allocation recommendations for this meeting. We made some rebalances at the last few meetings, but today, we're recommending to stay with the current allocation. Page 23 is the municipal pension.
I'll just answer a question, because we're over our target percentage. But you're, you remember what the large cap, do we have it separate, large cap? US or is it just US stocks? I don't remember a thing in our investment.
Within the investment policy statement? There, there is subcategories. And they should, you know, basically match what's, so if you look at page.
Page, whatever.
Yeah.
16.
Page 16. So are you saying where the, where the.
Well, I'm just looking at large cap. It's 38.4. Remember, I asked this question last time. Yeah, we were toward the high end.
Right, I'm saying, are you asking, are we?
Yeah, we're approaching the high end.
I, this report doesn't have, have it, and we screened to, to make sure that there's no breaches. So you're not over it, but I couldn't tell you exactly what the high end is.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't remember either, so.
Okay, thanks. So, yes, the, you know, the, all these portfolios are similar in structure. Same investment managers, same allocations, except for yield-type allocations are different at times. But page 23 is the municipal. So again, this is going to be a little bit repetitive as far as the allocation goes, but 34.8 million in November 20th. And skipping over to page 27 is the, the June, I'm sorry, the September 30th performance, again, also similar numbers, similar setup, similar allocation. And the one thing that has, you know, is, is worth, you know, just pointing out is that in this quarter is when your annual required contributions came in of fiscal year. And then, you know, we're invested, you know, proportionally, you know, across each of the three pensions. So you can see that in the cash flow numbers as well. So you could see that in the cash flow numbers as well.
So between the three uh pension plans, the police municipal and admin uh calendar year to date through September. The difference in return is like point one percent between the three, so very, very similar. Same manager lineup, virtually same allocations. Um, the only real differences occur, you know, when there's outflows. Um, but it's very minor in terms of impacting performance and and cash drag, so uh very similar.
Yes, the one difference, uh and we can go there now is on the OPEB. Well, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Yeah, forty-one. So here, page forty-one. Notice that there's more fixed income. Uh compared to equity. Um and the way we've set that up, this the the OPEB has um. An annual contribution and then quarterly claims that pay out. So uh if you think of it, it's accumulated over time where every year contributions go in. And a large majority of those contributions will go out to pay claims throughout the year. But there's a portion that stays and every year that portion stays and builds up and builds up and builds up to the point where it's now thirteen and a half million. And so there's a larger portion that stays investment invested and grows. And so in the beginning of the year, when the annual contribution comes in. We've gone to a point just uh where a hundred percent of that goes into the two most conservative investments, which are. Two of the bond funds, JP Morgan and and BlackRock. And everything else stays invested. So that's why today uh the allocation is more conservative because we're one quarter in. That inflow went into those two bond funds. Um by the end of the fiscal year, this allocation will look more like the pensions because we're pulling from those two bond investments throughout the year.
Retirement medical.
Other pension employee benefits.
Sorry, Mike, you're breaking up, but yeah, we we uh. We we went through it.
Okay.
Yeah, the last uh part, there's no questions on the portfolios. The last part of what we want to cover, if there's desire and time, we talked about this at the last meeting. It was more educational and just to see if, you know, where this goes, was talking about something called alternative investing. We had talked about it in, you know, case of portfolios or uh. Elect as well, some of the pensions. Are at a size where you could consider a third bucket is called alternative investing. Others, the smaller size, so let's put the open side of the administrative pension and is questionable. Whether or not it's it's a valid option to put that third bucket in. However, this entire space we're gonna talk about is evolving and it's just becoming more accessible, so it's possible. But that said, I think there was no open question as to whether these investments were even, you know, allowed in these in the portfolios. And whether or not all three pensions should always be managed in a identical fashion. That was sort of just open discussion at the last meeting, who figured we should bring some education to talk about it.
Yeah, because because right now the investments in the pension are either public equities or investment managers that own public equities. Or investment managers that own public fixed income. So you're very liquid. If we needed to trade out of this portfolio in its entirety, we could do that within a few days. There's no lockups, there's no illiquidity portion of the portfolio. Um, the idea of adding alternatives is they are a not different diversification vehicle. Um, so they entail their own risk return parameters. They may respond a little bit differently to markets. Relative to public equities and public fixed income. And they also entail their own liquidity parameters, meaning that they may be less liquid than traditional public equities. So with that, they may or may not be appropriate for a public pension fund or any foundation or endowment matter. So we're happy to walk through just educationally the different types of alternative investments that are out there. Um, there's also differences in terms of the structure of each of these investments. Uh whether or not there's a long investment lead time, or if it's something that you can go in and you're automatically invested pretty much on day one.
Who would make that decision as to whether this is something these funds could do, like the town attorney or? Are there rules, like I think you're alluding to, there may be rules against investing in this.
Yes.
So we wanna just, you know, get the conversation started, see if it's worth looking into just high level today. Just so the committee has a, just a general idea of what these even are and whether it's worth.
Yeah, because the state of Connecticut took a big hit from the study from like the guys at Yale saying that their results for the Connecticut pensions are very. Understated, returns are very understated because of high expenses and the fact that they weren't in. And these alternative investments compared to others.
Yeah. A more traditional portfolio like this one, which is public stocks and bonds. Um, they have, it has outperformed the Yale model um in general. Um, you could argue that the Yale model might have less volatility. Because private markets aren't always traded on a stock exchange, so you don't get that short term. Um volatility in alternatives are meant to depend, there's a lot of different types, but they many times are meant to lower the overall risk. But there's high costs associated with them all. But yeah, um, there's a a stapled handout, uh I think everyone should have. We're we're not gonna go through every page. Uh, the back half of this is sort of more about UBS's capabilities, but we won't, we won't cover that. Um, sticking to just the educational portion. Uh, which if you just skip to page three. But I'll just, you know, interrupt me at any point, but there's generally four classifications of alternative investments. Hedge funds, you might have heard that 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 term, private equity or private credit, real estate and managed futures. Hedge funds generally invest in public markets, not always, but but in general, they they will buy stocks and bonds. Difference is hedge funds can use leverage, as hedge funds can bet against stocks. And where they could do all all the above or whatever combination, they have ultimate flexibility in their structure. Um, so. You know, not all hedge funds are created equal. They have a different philosophy, different strategy, different risk profiles. But it's basically, you know, uh investments, investing with. Much uh more flexibility, including the fact that you use leverage. Private equity, private credit, just think, you know, the stock market are all publicly available companies. Well, there's, there's many more private companies in the world, so the opportunity set to invest is a lot larger in the private space. So private equity is when investors are buying equity or ownership in a company. Private credit is when investors are lending money to private companies that are not traded. Real estate is is, you know, obvious, however, there is a distinction between publicly traded real estate. There are public REITs that are traded on exchange, those are have a much different volatility profile, they trade trade like stocks. Where private real estate, you know, you still own buildings and, you know, uh. Well, warehouses, a lot of different types of properties, but it is, you know. Private doesn't trade on exchange, so the volatility profile is much lower. And then finally managed futures, which is, I think, commodities and, you know, other type of. Uh currencies, things that trade on exchange and usually a managed futures. Fund is trying to find trends in the commodities market.
I I would say, generally speaking, this isn't always the case, because you could take whatever risk parameter in any of these categories you want. But generally speaking, when you're looking at hedge funds for a pension fund. You tend to want something that gives you a volatility stream that's somewhere between bond markets and equity markets. Uh but hopes to improve or optimize return over time. So you're not aiming to buy a hedge fund that is gonna blow up or can give you four hundred percent return. You're looking for something that's gonna give you above inflation types of returns over time while also lowering volatility in the portfolio. Private equity tends to be a vehicle where you try to get returns that are above public equity markets over time. But with pu- pu- private equity, you tend to have a very long investment time period and a very long period of illiquidity. So a traditional private equity structure, you put money in and it's not invested right away. It could take a few years for them to identify good quality companies. And once they get those companies up and running, then as an investor, you start to get distributions over time. And typically, these could be ten years or more. So what a lot of pension funds will do that wanna go in the world of private equity, if they're large enough, is they do what's called vintages. Where they may go into a private equity exposure one year and then the next year they do another private equity investment and the next year another private equity. So you think of it like you're adding money all along, but as some of these private equity funds are seasoned, you're getting money externally. All along as well, so it's not a major net investment over time. But again, you have to have the ability to invest in those. You have to have a very long time horizon. You need to have liquidity within your portfolio to do that. There are alternatives, though, that are shorter, where you can go into a private equity structure. Um, that's already owns a lot of these seasoned types of investments. Where the risk is less because you're not investing dollars that are gonna be invested, but the upside is less as well. So those are there as well. So I would say things like private equity and hedge fund exposure, that's probably what we've seen the most of. In terms of pension fund investment, uh managed futures. My experience with managed futures, they can be a good investment. They tend to be good for a few years and then they have a bunch of not so good years. But and then real estate, real estate is another animal in and of itself. So if you think of a real estate investment. On the very conservative side of things, you're investing in things like, uh, you know, apartment buildings or office space that are all that are leased, right? They have regular cash flows, they're not empty. Those investments tend to be called core, they're very reliable. The upside is less because you're just basically getting paid the leases, but the risk is a lot less. Then you have what's called core plus, where you may invest in a combination of properties that are leased as well as properties that still need to be leased. And then you have the more opportunistic investments, which are things like land or properties that really need a lot of investment. To bring up them up to what's considered true value and those are the most risky areas. So even within the world of private real estate, kind of runs the gamut in terms of risk return. Um, so a lot of different areas, I think the concept of alternative investments is kind of a catchall. Um, but you know, whether it's hedge funds or private real estate or or private equity. These are available to you provided that you have the ability to invest in them, given their liquidity constraints.
Do you have a feel for how many of your pension clients that you manage do these alternative investments? And what percentage of their portfolio they invest?
Sure, so uh from my experience, um, you know, it tends to be, you probably wanna do at least five to ten percent, otherwise it doesn't move the needle.
Right.
Uh, but again, you have to have liquidity for that. Um, I would say probably my experience is more on the the real estate side and the private equity side and or uh. Hedge fund of funds, which is more of a, you know, kind of a multi-strategy, lower risk type of hedge fund investment. I don't know if you wanna add anything to that.
Yeah, I think um it's a mix bag. Many of our clients have have um held back and. Bucket partly from our advice um because of the high fees.
Right.
Um, what's happening though is there are, you know, the landscape is changing. There's there's a much bigger opportunity set in the private markets, there's less companies coming public than ever before. It's just, and so um things do, and there are more, call it innovative. Uh more investor friendly ways to invest now, where you don't have to lock up the money for ten years. Um, for private equity, for instance. So uh we, you know, we are having more conversations where pension funds are, you know, dipping their toe. Uh but it's generally in the real estate and private equity side, um not as much in the hedge fund. Hedge funds are. This is just a bias here, but you, you know, there there are high fees. There are a few out there with very, very excellent track records where they never had it down a year, like literally. Or if they did, if they were down, you know, one percent in two thousand eight or something like that. You know, but it's harder to find those that are super consistent. And generally, many of them, which is a good thing, act as a counterbalance to the rest of the risk in your portfolio. But um, you know, it's not always necessarily in line with what what a pension needs. You know, if you need to hit an actual rate of return and and our and our assumptions will get you there with this amount of risk. To us, adding something like real estate or private equity adds more value. And a hedge fund, which might lower the return and lower the risk, so that's generally.
John, can you hear me okay without breaking up, David and Ashley?
Yeah.
Okay, so John, to answer your question. As a group, within our group, we have our investment committees, over the past five, six years. We've been reticent to put anything, anything of real estate into the towards the dollars and. On the private equity side and even the real estate side, when rates were near zero, we thought the pricing was off. Meaning that that finance was an unnatural place to finance the deals. So if you think about it, John, anybody born before nineteen eighty never experienced inflation. And those are the people that we're looking for. People, the people, the people, the deals to do. We've been going back in now into private equity, with some actually distressed debt and real estate portfolios. But the driving force for every client is liquidity. If uh the pension is really robust and well funded, it would enhance the downturn in the market. Not get worried about the liquidity, the private act of the alternative investments. We're gonna say that you should have five to ten percent allocation. Terms of hedge funds, it's unique in this market. John, you've been around for a while and I think some of the members know the same thing, but. The public stocks and bonds, okay, they're going long and short different securities. And the way they make the return of the finance funding, so only get to pay four, five, five percent. They borrow money and do what's called leverage it up, so they're looking for returns between fifteen and twenty. Why would I expect that that is going to the stock market the past two or three years and get the same kind of returns without that that? Leverage or additional risk that they're right on their core guesses. Does that answer the question, John, or so we're mostly going to private equity, distressed debt and real estate?
Yeah, one other thing I've heard too, though, is that a lot of the public markets going private, right? Private equities buying up. And so there's less public market to buy, so there's almost. At some point in time where the private equity is gonna control more of the companies than the public does.
So John, I'll give you the stats on that because you're absolutely right. You and I've been at this for the same amount of time. I started this business in nineteen eighty-one. In nineteen eighty-one, there were eighty what are called leveraged buyouts, which are now private equity, gotta finance your name. Nineteen eighty-one was the first um leveraged buyout or private equity deal. It was two hundred and fifty million dollars. It was done by K K R, our K K R, providing the businesses is valued at two hundred and fifty million dollars. When we bought in nineteen ninety-one, there were over nine hundred and two hundred to three stocks, stocks buying to the New York, American and over the counter markets. Today is thirty-two hundred stocks you can buy, given private equity mergers and acquisitions and not a lot of initial public offerings coming out. To further take what you just said, now there's thirty-two hundred stocks you can buy. And private equity right now controls eight thousand companies in the extended. Okay, almost as many individual stocks as I'm referring to, it's John. So yeah, the private equity market is the place to, is one of the places. So much so, about the the three largest employers and the five largest employers in the United States are Walmart, Amazon, Blackstone. Okay, so that private equity guys control a lot more of the the jobs in this country than anybody knows. Does that answer the question, John?
Yep. Okay. Do you know of any municipal groups that are in private equity? I know Bristol is, but their pension is a hundred and thirty percent funded, so I guess they can sort of afford to do that.
Do you?
They're afford to buy. Thanks, thanks to ESPN, but.
We had a studies of what the private equity is in in Connecticut, we'll we'll gather that for you. I don't.
Yeah. Part of my audit experience, I've looked at some private equity deals and I. I don't know, some of it seems like smoke and mirrors to me, especially the rate of return that they project and. And the value that they project, cuz it's so long term, you don't really know until it's over and.
That's always been a question, Mark, is trying to actually compute the returns that.
Oh, yeah, I've looked at so many computations, I'm like, you know, okay.
More more work, more quite, more plausible as with the exit strategy for the companies and the private equity companies are not taking the companies public. They're trading with each other, so it's kind of kind of smart, they give the valuation they want as they trade around with each other, so. That makes it interesting also. But David, why don't you quickly give the what we found out about the um. Universe, when you can buy everything through the company that takes you private and lends the money to you to take your private. About all the services, how they make it efficient.
Um yeah, I think you're talking about Blackstone Private Credit.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
It's just an interesting one, uh I mean, I just. Giving idea of the the universes out there and what these private equity companies are doing. So Blackstone has a fund that's private credit, which Blackstone is lending to this, so they're not buying businesses. Actually, on the other flip it over, but part of their value proposition to these companies are looking for. Uh borrow money, this is if you borrow from Blackstone. You get access to Blackstone's um uh internal uh network of of. Which they leverage um. And allow all their vendors to use, so an example is that if if. Blackstone lends me money, I also get the same rate on Amazon's AWS web services that Blackstone does. And so they view it, they they actually position, we can help you improve your margins by. Allowing us to lend you money.
Yeah, yeah, that's interesting, yeah.
Of course, I'm sure they build it in Thomas. They have a cousin that used to work for G Capital putting deals together, now he does it on his own, so I. I've heard some of the stuff that he's done.
But our our bottom line is, you know, we think if the if the if it's a suitable. Investment going forward, we would, you know, continue to have the discussion and see the comfort level of the committee. You know, we have clients to do both um. But this universe is a is a large one and there's a lot of. Nuances within it, so we would really just talk about what we thought was the most appropriate. But there is, there are more options that are more liquid today than there ever were. Um you may give up some return, but there's still value there, so um. What doesn't change is that these are all generally higher cost.
But so it it's interesting cuz the the pension act are actually. But there's a section in a report that talks about the different returns, cuz she shows the universal returns and what people are investing. And. Her conclusion was that looking at private equity. It gave our current portfolio, she's pegging it six and an eight percent return. With, you know, about standard deviation of eleven percent, she's saying private equity is nine point three. Return with standard deviation of third. So that that would mean that sixteen percent of the time, you know, twenty one percent loss. I'm not sure, it'd have to be a pretty small part of our portfolio, but you're saying there's other alternatives, she's.
Yeah.
She's just looking at.
Our, yeah, that's interesting, cuz our capital markets are different on private equity, but part of it. Part of it has to do with this, the what what's called smoothed returns with private equity, because they're only valued quarterly. So and so there's a lag effect and sometimes. That lag effect is all you need to kind of have a much. Um smoother experience, especially if you think of like. You know, during covid, the equity markets reacted, you know, and.
Enabled on by.
Yeah. Portfolios and private equity didn't really experience that volatility, so. There's a couple ways to look at it, but.
And it also depends on, even within private equity itself, there's different strategies. So there there's ways to focus on, you know, basically established companies where you're taking them private and improving efficiency and then bringing them back to market.
Right.
Tends to be less risky than venture capital, where you're starting off a new ones.
Yeah.
So it really depends on the structure and what the focus is, so. Like anything else, it runs the gamut, so.
Yeah, when we run our capital market assumptions, we're assuming that. The private equity exposure is more like the former that I mentioned, rather than doing something that's really risky.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe still find out if we can do this, right, that's that's the that's the first step, I think.
Well, I think we also wanna think about if we wanna do it, even if others says it's okay.
Well, I mean, yeah. There's no thinking, yeah, right, right, yeah. But the first step is if you say, yeah, can we do it then?
Yeah. They say, no, everyone learned a thing or two today.
Yeah. Um but that says, you know, including our portion. Kind of spent a good amount of time talking about markets, so thank you. Everyone, I believe that's helpful.
Yeah, thanks. When I need to start.
Yeah.
Question that doesn't have to do with it, you guys just presented necessarily, but I'm wondering why we have three different pools. That's meant like, why isn't the admin and the other, why isn't one big tool? But they just have the uh different groups, the different bargaining groups.
So they have to keep like the trust separate.
Such as like if the three pensions you do have, just so you know, two are closed, two new members.
Thanks. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah.
Thanksgiving. Good. Sir. Who's Virginia?
Yes.
Just in case you wanted, if you send out.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you. I know I'm my broken speaker.
I would recharge.
Well, it works, it's on your phone.
Conference call number doesn't work, yes.
All right, moving forward, we'll talk about the the R F R P.
Don't know if you guys have copies, but you go. There you go.
I have a copy.
String, I just wanna read on my phone.
Okay, I got one, I think, yeah, I want to.
So um we're required to go out to um bid for. Agent of record. This is the RFP that we put together. With Lauren Ryan, put help me put together our procurement director. It's very similar to when we went out last time, cuz the services that we're looking for are not changed. Uh she did a few things she had to update. We're looking to potentially do this, put it out. After after Thanksgiving, probably beginning of December, and then start interviewing um after the new year. Um last year, last year, last time we went out to bid, we did a subcommittee. I don't think we need a subcommittee.
How many, how many fewer people can you get?
I guess, so this is what we got and uh to be, I did last time we did go out, we got, I believe, approximately twelve people responded to the RFP. We interviewed three.
Three, right?
Yeah, we did three.
Um we did them all one night, too, right?
We did.
Yeah, okay.
We did, I um the RFP, we've been getting back the responses, been much fewer lately, so I'm not expecting.
We just, we were talking, John, we had a set of questions, right, instead of.
It was a set of questions, we can modify those and go through those um to to. Make them maybe more relevant to now than they were.
Yeah, and then we also had a scoring criteria.
Scoring card for each for each presentation in different areas. But yeah, I did get kind of screwed up last time we did it.
Uh there's some confusion among the different members about how to score and stuff, but.
So um but there is is a good chance, cuz I know um they'll did say the presentation and what they give us on a quarterly basis is one of the areas. They usually talk about what they'll, what kind of services and stuffs. But I want to put this forward to you guys to see if you have any questions about it, um anything like that, before we actually put it out.
I had a couple comments on it, but last time. Do you see more stuff from Lockton than we do? Cuz last time they promised they were gonna give us all this regional stuff and national stuff and blah, blah, blah.
Please, no, I don't care, no, I.
They had this whole booklet, it was like, oh, we have all this stuff that we can get and.
I've been the reports, the regular reports, I get the same ones that you got. Jen gets all the bills on a um monthly basis.
Yeah.
We pay with some information there, but I haven't seen. I've gotten maybe one other report we get.
Thick booklet about their whole database and what they could provide us and, you know.
No.
Okay.
No, I I haven't got anything worth anything, you guys.
Okay, cuz it sounded good last time.
Yeah.
If they don't do it, it doesn't.
Is that the thing, like, maybe that's one of our questions in in the sense of like, do we have to proactively go out to them to get this great stuff that they have in this database? Or will they make it a point?
Sometimes the other thing could be, there could be, like, I don't know if there's different levels of reporting that they're providing, you know, oh, you're getting our base, but here's all the, you know. Like, when you look at the card, it's got all the options, but then.
Then what they're giving you is a basic.
They all promised they were gonna give us like a ton of stuff, including Lockton and.
And you know, we could have, we could have taken, you know, company B and they could have given us the same, the same.
You have to say um. Dave was our person giving us all the reports back then, when we're getting.
Right.
Meetings and stuff, the personals kind of changed, so I think if you want to specify what you want different, this would be the opportunity. We can do it.
Yeah, I'd just like to hear what they're gonna say about what they're gonna give us. Do you have, uh somebody asked before, do you have a feel for what the cost is now, annual cost?
I don't, but I can, I can.
Okay. Yeah, I was thinking like sixty five to eighty now, but I can't remember.
Of the six year term, is that, like, would you go out standardly with everything or?
No, this is as per, as per charter.
Okay.
I do, we go out for auditing. Do that on a four to five year basis. Um and I gotta tell you, we went up for auditors last year. One.
You got one off. One to spots.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of money in it.
Well, the problem is too, they can't get staff, other auditing firms can't get the staff to actually take on new auditing jobs. They'll stick with the pool they have, but they're not looking to go out to bid to get a new job.
Yeah, I think the standing insurance community, I think we go out every three years for an agent of record, a little quicker.
I was like, you know, three with three one year options or something like that, but the s- cuz the six kind of locks in, but. If you can also.
But we can get rid of them if we want, if they're not performing.
I just say that in there, if anytime you want to, and we agree with you.
Who checks into the references or who reports back from the references?
Um that is uh procurement, that's Warren.
Okay.
This will be open, they'll double check the information in the bids. We'll go through them, we can, we, last time, as a group, looked through all of the bids. And review to to narrow down just the ones we wanted to interview and then show show.
I mean, the references from like other entities that request.
We signed contracts. From doing.
Even before.
She she will, she will review before we even interview. She will reach out to different towns that they have listed.
Yeah, she's figured everybody can and knows everybody else, so that. Probably, you know, somebody knows somebody.
She goes to meetings with other um town officials that she has not touched. And there's only a certain number of people really in the market that'll do this.
How long have these guys been? The agent of record?
Two, two, two.
At least before I got here.
It's been, it's been ten years.
Twelve years. Yeah, they've been here ever since I had, so. I think I started in thirteen. Thirteen, they've been the same guys. Now, are they past the six years now cuz of covid or?
Yep.
Was there an ex- an escalation in their fees after the six years?
Okay.
I think they kept the same, just continued on.
Yeah, you guys fans or they all look alike, I don't, I just don't have much to go on beyond whatever.
Well, I think, do you remember what the names of the other ones were?
U S I.
U S I.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, they were, they were pretty.
That's actually the standing insurance, they do um, they do, or they, I don't know if they still do, but I think last I knew they got it, uh our liability. They were um the agent of record that had downed in Clinton when I was there.
Okay.
They were good.
Yeah, they were really, they were the slickest, but it, I felt like they were the slickest. So, you know, I felt like I was at a consulting meeting or something. And he goes, I felt like I was one of my presentations, so.
First, I don't feel like these guys listen, but, you know, if they're, that's only just sitting in these meetings, if they're doing what you guys need to do and. Going after your carriers when there's a claim issue, then that that's a whole other different kind of.
That's how we, this, we don't see, we don't see how they, you know, operate with the carriers and to get a claim, you know, paid at this time. Well, I think in the past, Janet, though, you said that they were pretty good going after carriers, right?
Yeah.
Cuz that was one of the questions I asked at the meeting, if.
Yep.
How they were and.
They're pretty responsive.
Yeah, I think I I got the feeling that the town at least felt they were good.
Yes, we don't see, we see the reports, but.
We can contact them, I don't think data wise, we've gotten the stuff that we were looking for in the past. But if we contact them, we're very responsive to get that, cuz follow them. Cuz we're dealing with anthem and, you know, this.
Now that the, all the renewals come in a budget that they had come up with, cuz last time we talked to them was before. The renewal, right, with its anthem.
What did we do for dental stuff, for the renewal, the fiscal year we're in right now?
As I said, the stop loss is going up like thirty five percent or thirty eight percent.
No, I think it's more than approximately what they were saying.
Okay.
Dental, dental was dental, has an increase in now. Dental no increase.
I guess I could tell by looking at the.
They've been pretty good negotiating toward, right? Yeah, they were all expensive, like thirty one, but I don't know if dental's included in what they shared, it looked like it was just medical, but. Uh this was probably all stop loss.
Yeah.
Yeah, stop loss was a big thing they were going out for, and I don't think that came in over what they were predicting the last time that they talked.
Yeah, well, I thought that I thought that that was going up like five or six, but then the stop loss is going up a lot more.
Yeah. Okay. Almost made your money back on the reimbursements, but it's not how stop loss companies like to operate.
Well, no, you're not gonna make it back in the future, right?
Talking about, we're looking, we were making notes in the list, a lot of those large losses, those were OPEC. So when we're going back and talking about the OPEC fund, the people afterwards, those are the ones we're getting the reimbursement from the OPEC fund every quarter. It is still growing, which is a great thing.
Yeah.
Two of them passed away, yeah, so.
Yeah, I had a couple minor comments on it, but do you just want me to send them to you?
You can send them over to me and then I can sit down with Lauren when she's she's out this week, but when she gets back next week, we can sit down, go through.
Okay, yeah, it's not, it's nothing major, just. Some minor wording things and the fact that all the pension numbers are page number one, but. We're working for an auto firm, but yeah. Look at some of that stuff.
So I think we do the same thing, we do all the entries in one day, one, one night, just one, two, three.
And I would suggest probably three companies.
More than three, yes, you get.
Real with three, yeah.
I mean, will we get handed just the three from procurement or is it gonna be like?
No, just go, uh we'll send those out, I'll probably call a special meeting for us once we get everything in and just. The meeting will be literally just going through like we did last time, going through what came in and and. Calling it down to just three, unless all we get is three, in which case I won't have to call meeting and we'll just schedule.
If I even say we had a, have four. Have minimum solicited or responses or something, I.
I think.
Yeah, I know, that that was gonna be my next question.
I can, I can follow the board on that one, too.
Okay.
So we're probably not gonna meet until after the new year, then.
Right.
Correct.
And we'll do that, we're gonna try to get it in place by next July.
Right, it will be in place by next July.
For the board, or is it just like a draft for beautiful, you know?
That's just, if you guys, any comments you wanna make, send it back to me, I will sit down with Lauren, go through, finalize it and get it up.
Any other? Any remarks?
Happy May, since I sent some stuff out.
Here.
Did you guys, I have extra copies.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not going to talk a lot about it, you guys could read through it later, I just. The actuary, our pension actuary, the the latest data we have from our pension actuary, seven one. Twenty twenty three. That's the latest actuarial review she's done, so you can sort of see where we were in the middle of this page on the left hand side. Um, I tend to look at. Market value, so I think it's true value. She, her report always talks about actuarial value, which is smooth asset value. Which I think makes sense from a funding standpoint. But I want to see, I want to see where we're actually funded, so. When you look at this overall. At seven one twenty twenty three, we're fifty eight percent funded in our pensions. Uh, police being sixty five. Uh, seven one twenty twenty four, I updated it based on her liability numbers for seven one twenty twenty four and actual. UBS stuff that we got as of six thirty twenty twenty four, so it's gone six points better, as we, we know the market's been going. Bonkers.
John, I can tell you, we get a report that I have to give to the auditors, it doesn't have the arc or anything in there. But you're just about right on the mark, it was on average up to six percent.
Oh, yeah, okay. And then I also asked, U UBS in this presentation gave us numbers as of November. Twenty twenty four, so we have the Trump bump in there. And actually, I tend to concentrate on the police pension, because it's the biggest one, biggest liability. And that's now at seventy seven percent based on market value. Um, which is the highest. Other than seven one twenty one, which was seventy eight percent, it's the highest since. Pre dot com in two thousand. So it's the highest percent funded, which to me is good news. Um.
What made the liability increase?
Well, yeah, you still have people in it, so you have people that are earning more. Right, and earning more toward their pension, so this is the, the liability is only in the earned portion of the pension so far, it sort of assumes they leave. So we hired new police officers that are younger. With five to nine years of experience that are in the pension fan.
They also added a drop plan.
Oh, yeah.
To this, which increased the liability.
Slightly.
For the police, just.
Yeah, slightly. And as you can see, the municipal administration's going down because it's a closed plan.
Close plan.
And people are either dying or hatching out of it.
That's what aging out of it.
Yeah, well, aging out of it's the same thing. Dying is aging out of it.
Graduating with wings.
That's a good way to say it.
Oh, that's a nice way to say it.
Yeah. Okay, so you you guys can read it later, and if you have any questions, that's fine, I just, I I like to keep track of where we are and I'm feeling better. As long as the mar, I I just. It's about the market, right? I'm feeling better, given assets we have, but.
And you've been here for a while, and I've heard you talk about the, the, the number was much lower than the fifty eight quite a while ago, wasn't it? It was.
Oh, yeah, it's 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 lower fifties at certain points of time, yeah. Well, and the thing is too, now I think we have a reasonable investment assumption, the six and an eighth percent. Back in. Two thousand, it was eight percent. Back in. Seven one twenty one, it was six and seven eights. So I I think. It's a better number because the market's up, but it's also a better number because our assumptions are better.
Yeah, we're making more realistic assumptions.
Right. Because I. About eight years ago, I argued we should have the pension actuary running with six percent return, because. To me, I thought that was reasonable for a sixty forty portfolio. And I put a motion forward and nobody would second it. Because they said the town can't afford it. And my point was, we're the committee, we're not supposed to decide on what the town can afford, if town decides on what they can afford. We should tell them what we think is right. Um, that didn't go too far, so.
Well, we did eventually bring it down.
Yeah, no, there was a plan to bring it down over time and it took a while to do it. Yeah, it was just frustrating thirteen years ago, when everybody started.
Um, I have revisited since though we've come out of COVID in the last two years, any surplus we had at the end of the year, I'm asking. Them to um, put a portion of that into the pension.
Okay.
So we're waiting for that market when it does.
Yeah, yeah.
We're softening it a little.
Yeah. Okay, and then the the back page, it shows somebody, one of the former members of this committee and the current town councillor asked me. You keep on talking about a hundred percent funded, why do I care if it's a hundred percent funded or not? So this sort of shows the black line down at the bottom, if we were a hundred percent funded right now for a police department, we would only have to contribute a million a year. If we were totally unfunded, we'd have to contribute the red line, which is up on top, so we'd be contributing five million a year. Going up to almost seven million twenty years from now. Um. So it it kind of messes your, could mess your budget up a little bit. What we're currently doing is the green dotted line, which says we're. Contributing about three and a half million. Going up to five million. And being fully funded in twenty thirty six. Which drops you down to the fully funded line, so then we'd start to be paying a million a year. That, that's the current stated amount that we're going to amortize this over the next twelve years. What we tend to do is. Janet, you can correct me if we're wrong, what we tend to do is. The payment gets to be too big, as we get down to like ten years of amortization, we go, oh. Oh, can we make that thirteen again? So we go up to thirteen again, so it's what we do, it tends to be more like the yellow line there. Which I I think. I was always against that, but now I, I miss myself that that may be, when I looked at this graph, I missed myself, that may be a reasonable compromise. You know, because right now it's about three and it's going to drop over time to about two and never get to a hundred percent fully funded. Okay. Sorry for keeping an extra ten minutes late.
Well, that makes.
No, maybe. That was actually good info.
And these pension funds can't be like messed with for anything else, I mean, I guess.
No, they're. You cannot fund them. You couldn't. Because, because the prior pension, I, one of the other pension actuaries from. Milliman a couple of years ago came in and said he had a fund in Texas. And their amortization period was infinity, because they couldn't afford it. That's not the right answer, so they were essentially doing pay as you go. Of course, in court in Rhode Island, too, the. The state government changed that they got rid of defined benefit pensions. For the state. And they put in a rule that said, they put in a rule that said towns had to be eighty percent funded. Well, the town I have a second home in. Was sixty percent funded.